All right, I'd like to call the Clarence Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. Today is Monday, June 22, 2020. In pursuant to the Governor's proclamation on mass gatherings, once again, we will have no visitors allowed at the Board of Education meetings. Therefore, this meeting is being held virtually through Google Meet. Questions were allowed to be submitted via the district's homepage. So with that, go through roll call. If everybody could just acknowledge their presence. Matt Stock?
Here.
Tricia Andrews?
Here.
Dennis Piori?
Here.
James Boglioli? Dawn Snyder?
Here.
Mary Beth Sweeney?
Here.
Thank you. And Mike Fuchs is in attendance as well. We also have Dr. Hicks, Mr. Michelle, Mr. Mancuso, and Mrs. Overhold present for the meeting. Moving forward, before we approve the agenda, there's a section for announcements. I guess just at the onset, I would like to congratulate all of you on the phone, the video call, and the staff of Clarence Schools for moving up in the business first rankings and attaining the number two ranking for the first time since 2012. Outstanding testament to all the hard work each of you do every day and the partnership with the students and the parents. So congratulations. Does anybody else have any announcements tonight? See none? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second? All right. Again, we'll do the roll call for approvals. Approval in a second. Motion in a second. Matt, yes or no?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Mary Beth?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. We have two minutes in our packet, the first being from our regularly scheduled board meeting and executive session on May 4th, the second from our meeting on June 1st. Is there any questions or discussions? See none? If I could get a motion to approve?
Mike, I'll make a motion to approve both.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor? Matt Stock?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Mary Beth?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a section for correspondence. The packet that was posted on the website listed none. I wanted to make reference to three correspondence we did receive since the June 1st board meeting. The first was from Nicole Ressman concerning the budget vote communications and her desires to see an increased level of communications around the absentee ballot process that just we just concluded. And then we received two letters from former Clarence students, Kaylee Reed and Kim Carlson, both addressing a letter that was posted on our website and addressing their time as a minority student in the Clarence School System. I think there were some valid concerns that they had in their experiences granted a few years ago, but the points are noted, and I would suggest as we move and seek the new board that we might consider some of their points as we take up goal setting for next year. Is there any other correspondence that I'm not aware of or that I didn't list? Public comment sessions next on the agenda, obviously with no one present. We just have the website. Dr. Hicks, did we get any submissions?
None.
Okay, thank you. Next is unfinished business. Does anybody have anything to note at this time? Okay. Superintendent's report, Dr. Hicks?
Just real briefly, I can review two upcoming events. First, Thursday, Friday, Saturday is our drive-through graduation. We have everything coordinated, and I want to thank the high school administrators for putting in the work. Also want to thank the town of Clarence for loaning us the portable stage. Our guys have put rows of steps on both sides so students can walk across and process on the stage just like they would at a normal graduation. We have everything lined up so that things can go quickly, but still be respectful for people to be able to take photographs and experience the moment. So we start at nine in the morning on each one of the days. We end somewhere around 3:34. There's approximately 10 people signed up every half an hour, and they process around the south parking lot and engage in the walkthrough or drive-through graduation. So there is a place for participation by board members if you like, and we can talk about it at the end of the meeting, who might be interested and how to schedule it in. I'm sure all of you don't want to stand there for three straight days, but there is a time and a place for you to participate if you'd like, and you could either hand out diplomas or we have a special T-shirt that was designed by one of the members of the senior class, a really terrific artist that we're going to give the kids. And there's also some other things that the kids pick up as they drive by. So one of the things was a giant 2020. Our tech guys did make that. It'll be out there so the kids can take some photographs near that. We'll also have our brand-new mascot on a mannequin so the person doesn't have to stand in the sun for 14. The kids can do that as well. So very well planned. It's going to be a good experience for our kids. It doesn't look like we're going to be able to do an in-person graduation ceremony during July, but you never know. We'll still hold it out. Second thing, we're still awaiting guidance from SED, the Department of Health, and the Regents with regard to reopening. I did participate in the Regents Task Force last week. They've concluded it now throughout the state. Guidance is supposedly forthcoming from them. We anticipate that the guidance will be not specific, but more generalized and allow us flexibility. So we have already developed 98% of our plan. Our plan is divided into six large categories: communications, operations, health and safety protocols, building procedures and academics, social emotional supports, and we have a category of athletics because there are so many things to decide on how to allow our team to move forward as well. So we've written it. We've taken the advice and guidance of other states' plans. We've also taken what we could get from SED and the Department of Health, and as that official guidance comes in, we will make modifications to the plan. We've been told the plan is to be submitted to New York State by the end of July, but we don't have any official correspondence on that yet. Soon as the plan comes together a little bit more, we'll provide it to the Board of Ed if it's in time. And I do think that by the time the July reorganizational meeting comes up, we'll be able to kind of present the plan to you, allow you to have input and ask questions, and we'll also figure out a way that we can get it to the public. We did, we were part of a survey through Erie One Superintendent's. Over 25,000 people across the region participated in the survey. The highest participation rate was Clarence. We had about 3,600 parents, teachers, staff go on in and complete the survey. Most of the survey questions are about comfortableness with certain procedures and safeguards as we re-enter school. It's overwhelming that the community wants their kids back in school in September. That's a given. Some are more of a concern about different precautions and things that we would put in place to protect health and safety, but there's very few who say they will not send their kids back to school unless there's a vaccine or something else. So what we're hoping is that we have maximum flexibility with the state because we believe we can create a safe environment for students and we can get around the question of density, which is the biggest problem. So right now, the Department of Health guidelines call for six-foot distances for population density. That's very difficult for us to do, if not impossible to do, in classrooms. We're going to try to take everything out of a classroom in an elementary school this week and see just how many desks we can fit in. If we leave the traditional amount of teacher stuff, we can only get 12 or 13 desks in there. And if you recall from being in the elementary school, most of the kids learn at tables anyway, and then they learn on the rug. So spacing them six feet apart on the rug would be difficult because the rooms just aren't large enough. But we think that through the use of carb-y polonit, how do you say? Carb? Polycarbonate, sorry. Polycar, there's rules and regulations on these shields. They can't be just regular Plexiglas because they're a fire hazard. So if we get polycarbonate dividers plus masks for kids, unless students are in special education or have a medical condition and can't wear masks, we think we can get kids back in. We think we can have a safe return. We think we can cover all the bases and not have to go with a hybrid plan or a remote learning plan. Our plan, however, has redone the entire remote learning plan with all the lessons we learned from the three months, and we have considered a number of hybrid options. And those options, until we need to actually put them into place, they're just ideas. So that's where things stand if the board members had any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Not so much a question, but a comment on the polycarbonate. I mean, if you're looking at doing dividers, especially in the small classrooms, the only thing I'm, I have a concern about is, you know, the lack of air conditioning and how that's, that could get very toasty very quickly. But I'm sure you'll be able to figure something out.
Right. There might be a sound issue also if there's some hearing impaired kids. We're trying to get to the point where a teacher can be six feet away and doesn't have to use a mask, and if we put these polycarbonate dividers, we may be, be able to get to the point where kids don't wear masks. It really is contingent upon the updated guidance from the Department of Health and the square foot density regulations.
Any other questions?
I was just wondering, you know, the elementary principals talk so much to us about recess and, you know, the assemblies that they love to have with the elementary kids. Have we been thinking a little bit about that or?
We are, and right now, if we get to stage four, we're unsure what the mass gathering number will be set at by the Governor. He's increased it a little bit every time. Now that we're in phase three, it's at 25. We did have 150 at a graduation ceremony. That was kind of an exception to the rule. We're hoping that it's large enough so that even if we can't get an entire school in a cafeteria or a cafatorium at an elementary level, we could subdivide it into thirds or halves or fourths and try to do the assemblies that way. We don't want the assemblies and the student interaction. So we want to be able to schedule that somehow. Lunch is an issue. We do believe we can set up a schedule where kids at the elementary level eat lunch in classrooms, but we will need, teachers have a duty-free lunch in their contract. So we need teacher aides or other supervision so that we can take care of those classes that, as they work through the lunch day. So we're hoping that phase four brings with it a high enough number so that we can get at least a class of kids in an auditorium at the high school or middle school or, you know, three to four grade levels at an elementary school.
Jeff, how about busing? Can you give any insight on how that might look?
Yeah, it's a real problem area right now, Dennis. They did come out, the transportation supervisors across the state did create a guidance document that was helpful. Rick and our transportation supervisor have started to take a look through it. Right now, if we have to use the density requirements on a bus, Rick, what was it? We could only fit like 15 kids on a 66-passenger bus?
Yes, you can only have 12 on a full 72-passenger bus, so it would basically be impossible.
So we just can't, I mean, if we had to stagger bus runs in order to have that level of density, we just, we couldn't get kids here in time. We would have to have different starting times for the elementaries. This whole hard work that we had done to take the secondary level and move it to a late start time so that kids could be in their natural sleep patterns, which is they never go to sleep until one or two in the morning. We might have to have high schools start earlier. We don't want to have to do any of that. We think masks mitigate risk on buses. And again, unless it was a special ed student or a student that was medically fragile or couldn't wear a mask for some reason, we think that that'll take care of it. If they allow us the flexibility to mitigate the density issue, we should be okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, we will, we're shooting for the July meeting to give you a full report and let you see the plan.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Mr. Fuchs?
Thank you, Dr. Hicks. I guess moving forward to the finance portion of the agenda, Mr. Mancuso?
Okay, thank you. First item that we have is accepting the results of the vote. Certainly happy to announce that both the vote and the purchase of six buses passed basically two to one, so the community supported the budget. Tricia Andrews, Dawn Snyder were re-elected as board members, and a third board member, Joshua Lynch, was elected. We had a large turnout, probably the second largest I've ever had, 7,440, which does mean people running next year will need 149 petitions if everything goes back to a normal vote. But we just need to accept these vote results. I'll continue.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is three resolutions that are pretty standard. We do them every year at this time. One is a cooperative bidding resolution allows us to tag on to other municipal bids. We really bid everything we possibly can or go to state contract. The other two resolutions are standard to close the books, to process all of the budget transfers and the payments after June 30th, date of June 30th. The next item we have is the draft of the annual reorganization meeting. I do have a few things I would want to highlight on the draft. Number one, there is the new student tax collection, which we don't have the final agreement yet, and I will have it by the July meeting. Number two, we've got the calendar here, so that would be the calendar for the new year board meetings. We also have our audit committee, which Mr. Stock was a member of. So right now, we have two members only moving forward. Just to remind everyone, the requirement is three people minimum. One of the three, or whatever number you decide on, must be a board member. So if there's any board member that is interested, or if they have any suggestion for a non-board member, if you'd let me know, and we could get something together for the meeting where we'd like to approve it in July. Basically, there's seven standard resolutions here and three plans that have to get approved every year. If somebody read it all the way through and you notice that there's 11 instead of 10, we missed number nine, so we will re-number that correctly for the July meeting when we ask for approval. The next item is actually setting the date of the reorganization meeting. If the date isn't the first Tuesday in July, we need to set it. So we've had it on our calendar to recommend that July 13, Monday at 7:00 PM, would be the reorganization meeting. The next item is, since the community approved the $670,000 to purchase six buses, is a resolution to actually fund those buses through a five-year bond anticipation note. There's something I need to note here. What is standard with these is what's called a 20-day estoppel period. We have to publish for 20 days prior to the bonding attorneys and the municipal solutions actually borrowing the funds, that there's a 20-day comment period. Right now, legislation that the Governor has put through because of the pandemic has a tolling of that, so that means it's a holding period, so you really can't do the estoppel. So buses may be slightly delayed depending on when that tolling is lifted, and we could place the 20-day estoppel. We're still hopeful that it comes early enough that we'll have the buses, if not for the start of school shortly afterwards. The next bowing resolution is recommended, almost all school districts, I think, are going to put these through. It's for a tax and/or revenue anticipation notice. New York State has spring and summer aid that they give us. Some of the summer aid is through the old school year, and their finances are dictating that they may be delayed. Now, the aid for the 1920s school year, all indications are we will receive it in full, but it might be delayed. So if it is, we may not have enough funds to take us through October 15 when we receive our large tax revenue. If that's the case, as we're analyzing the cash flow every two weeks, then these resolutions will allow us to borrow funds needed to those dates. And I think the last item that I have are the fire inspections. Fire inspections are done at a prescribed month every year. This year, they were done in May, and naturally, there was nobody in the buildings, very little bit. The items that you see as violations are typically house cleaning items. There is one item I do want to make note of is, it says replace stage curtains at Sheridan Hill. That's actually not a fire code violation item. The fire, the code enforcement officer just noted that they were in bad shape, and they are on our radar to replace. Everything else was immediately taken care of, and the buildings were always, received their certificate of occupancy.
Does anybody have any questions, Rick?
I have a couple.
Go ahead, Dawn.
Going to some of the committees and information that we need to look into. On the mentor liaison, do we know who that is? Do we have anybody assigned at this point? Because I know Mary Sorrells resigned that position previously.
I, is that an annual appointment or is that just?
Annual appointment, yes, Rick. So we have not posted that position yet. So we currently have someone in the role.
So do they start then in the beginning of the, the school year, or is that something that starts prior?
They would start the week of new teacher orientation, so that would be the week of August 17.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thing, actually, I'm on the technology committee, but I wasn't listed, so you might want to maybe correct that if you could. That'd be great. And then in terms of, also with the technology, I know we have to accept it. Are we going to look at that in terms of distance learning and provide any modifications or updates?
Well, we, we have as part of the remote instruction plan for the reopening, a number of different things that deal with how to distribute technology, what to do with students don't have an internet connection, and the generalized structure of how the day will go when we do remote learning. Instead of it being in the technology plan, it'll be in the reopening plan.
Thank you. I just have a question about the reorganizational meeting. Is it, would it be possible to, for us to get a list of all the positions, whether they be internal or external, whether it be like the New York State School Boards Association or like what's available for us to potentially be on so that we can look at it and think it over and see what might be a good fit?
Part of the reorganization meeting, when you assign those, happens in July, but there should be no reason why we can't get that to you in advance.
Yeah, if possibly, we could circulate that current list and get it to Mr. Lynch as well, being the new member.
I do believe it's on the website as well.
One thing I want to think about as we head into the reorganization meeting, and maybe not the place to talk about it, is typically we all get assigned to a school to be the PTO liaison. I was thinking what might be beneficial one year for us to rotate through, so every board member takes a meeting of a different, different PTO, and we get to know all the different groups instead of one board member going to every PTO meeting. I just, I know some other school do it. I was talking to my parents about it. They're both administrators, and they thought, I think it might be a good idea, so we get to know some more people.
Any other questions for Rick? Rick, I just had one brief one with the revenue anticipation notes, and that, I mean, we've been in pretty solid revenue shape for some time as far as timing goes. I mean, how long has it been since we've had to consider this? Just to put it in context, the situation we're in?
I would say it's been either five or six years before we bid revenue or a tax anticipation note.
Thank you.
Rick, I just had one quick question about the Cooperative Purchasing Network.
Sure.
Well, can you just explain, is that, when we bid on that, is that because we all get up, we get it at a decreased price when we do it as a group?
Yes, as a matter of fact, what happens is, it's, works both ways. We could put a bid out vocally for, let's say, 100 desks, and in that bid, we could allow other municipalities to piggyback that bid. So then they don't have to bid, they will get the bid price that we were awarded. That's what we do with the groups that are listed on this resolution. They might bid something, but instead of us bidding it individually, we can just tag on to the price that they receive.
Okay. Thank you.
If none, can I get a motion to approve the finance items, F1 to F7?
Tell me.
Motion.
I think I heard James first as a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor? Matt?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And Mary Beth?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay. Moving on to personnel, Mr. Michelle?
Thank you, Mr. Fuchs. We have one request for an unpaid leave of absence for childcare. P2 Appointments has quite a few things this evening. An appointment for our teacher on special assignment for the curriculum office. Appointment of regular substitute for the middle school. Approval of the stipend, a stipend for a mentor service. There was a regular sub that extended longer in the year, so we had to add this piece for them in the spring. Approval for summer days for the teacher on special assignment and the director of the family support center. Approval of speech therapy services for the summer. P3 is the approval for guidance staff at the high school and the middle school just over their summer hours to help develop the schedule and prepare it over the building. P4 are summer curriculum projects recommended by Mr. Overhold. P5 is approval for professional development that was provided by Dr. Kotlick again this month. And P6 has approval list of staff members and their compensation for upcoming, what they would be paid for attending CSEs over the summer.
Does anybody have any questions on items P1 to P6? I guess just a general question, I probably could have been covered earlier, Dr. Hicks, in your presentation, but as we kind of enter the summer and we have so many unknowns, you know, all the, the incoming new student orientations and so... you know, all the incoming new student orientations and so forth, that are all typically done in person. Is there, what are the thoughts now? What are the contingency plans? How might some of that unfold?
Two, two sets of contingencies. One is to subdivide to the levels of density that are approved at that particular time. The other is we have a way to do them virtually, and they're not as good that way, especially the orientation for the kids coming into the high school and the middle school. But we do have a way to do some of the virtual stuff. So we're looking at the summer as three big hurdles. The first big hurdle was the budget vote, and our community supported us. So we're beyond that hurdle. The next big hurdle is the governor coming out and giving us detail on just exactly what the reductions to state aid will be once the package of federal relief help is solidified. And then the third is a reopening plan. So if we can get all those things completed by the end of July, we'll be wide open to be able to do things with orientation and other things in the summer.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything? Hearing nothing. Can I get a motion to approve P1 to P6?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor of the instructional portion of the personnel agenda? Matt?
Aye.
Tricia?
Sorry, aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Mary Beth?
Hi.
And I'm an a as well. All right, non-instructional?
Before we move on to non-instructional, there's one addendum to the personnel section. It is to approve the resignation of Robert Kniglio. He's been our high school assistant principal for the last 10 years, and I congratulate him as he moves on to be the principal of Williamsville North High School.
Outstanding. Certainly will be missed, but wish him, wish him all the best. He deserves the opportunity. Do you need a separate approval for the P1 addendum then?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So can I get a motion to approve the addendum to P1?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second? Thank you. All those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Mary Beth?
Hi.
And I'm an a as well. Okay, non-instructional.
Okay, non-instructional. P7 is to amend the retirement date of one of our employees who had previously submitted. She's graciously helping us out and moving her retirement date until after we've opened and gotten things rolling once again. P8 are three resignations, one for retirement purposes. P9 is a request for an unpaid medical leave of absence. P10 are two unpaid leave of absences. These are our current two house secretaries at the middle school that are awaiting a civil service exam so that they can stay in their current position. P11 is the request to return to active employment for one of our bus drivers. P12 appointments. This has a little bit of explanation. As you may see each June, there's a collection of temporary aides that are annually appointed. And in many cases, some of these aides have worked for us in excess of 10 years. So as an effort to clean things up a bit, we most, you'll see other than two of the aides on the list, they are moving all to probationary positions because they have been continuously employed for multiple years. There are two temporary positions that are there, and those two temporary positions are the positions that those house secretaries have left while they're waiting that civil service exam. Letter X is approval for summer employees, and it's under, specifically under transportation. We're approving all of the existing drivers and aides that currently work for us. The purpose of that is the director of transportation has gotten requests that people want to clean their own buses. From what I understand, there's still personal belongings in many of the buses. So rather than listing 80 names, we simply put the phrase that we would approve that all of them can clean their bus. It is not an increased cost because we're still cleaning the same amount of buses at the same rate of pay. P13 is a resolution to approve the contracts for both our director of facilities and our transportation supervisor. Both of these are three-year contracts. And just to aid the voting process, I'll put the addendum forward as well. Just in the submitted board packet, two of the hourly rates of the aides that were submitted were incorrect. So those two are just corrections to those rates.
Thank you. Any questions on non-instructional? Harry, none? Could I get a motion to approve items P7 to P13?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Mary Beth?
Hi.
And I'm an a as well. Special needs and student activities, Dr. Hicks?
Most of these meetings were from the last week of April through the month of May. We are one of the districts that continued to have CSE meetings even though we were in the middle of the pandemic and school was closed. If we hadn't done that, we'd be very much behind. There's 95 CSE and 40 CPSC meetings that took place over the last month and a half. So those are mostly all the annual reviews.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions on S1 or S2? Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve S1 and S2.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Mary Beth?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. All right, thank you. All right, moving forward, board development and policy. We have one item listed, the Board Handbook, second review. It is listed as an action, so just a couple of comments I'll make at the onset.
Mike, you're up for a second.
I'm sorry?
We have one addendum on this, on this particular area as well, and it's the Code of Conduct changes. Do you mind if we do that first and vote on it before we get into the handbook?
Sure.
Sorry about that. Every year, the assistant principals go through a process with teachers and stakeholders and create any changes there needs to be to the Code of Conduct. It's so tight that the changes are very minimal on an annual basis. So we sent the board the revised Code of Conduct. It only has a couple of things in it. Rob, just quickly describe what the changes are.
There is only one change this year is specifically on page 14. The previous 16 moves to 17, and this is numbered as 16. It falls under engaging in any conduct that endangers the safety, morals, health, or welfare of others. Specifically, it talks of the engagement of sexual activity and inappropriate behavior of a sexual nature. So that was added on 14, page 14 as number 16.
Was this email too, was Jeff?
I thought I did. Did I not?
I don't have it.
I don't remember seeing it, bud.
I don't have it either.
I believe it was in the packet.
One second.
Yeah, I don't have it.
I thought I did read something in the packet, but I don't, I didn't get a separate email on it.
Not to change, but it was in the packet.
Right.
Well, I will reemail it. I thought I emailed it to everyone separately. Sorry about that. But that was the only change for this year. All of the other material stayed the same. If you're not comfortable, we can do it still in July, but it's easier to get it out of the way here.
Well, I mean, I prefer to have it, but it is a minor change. What's the group's pleasure?
I have no problem doing it tonight.
Me too.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good.
So why don't break that up from Board Handbook, the item that's on the agenda? So we need a motion to approve the updated revised Code of Conduct? Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Mary Beth?
Hi.
And I'm an a as well. All right, thank you. So moving forward, circling back on the Board Handbook, second review. I guess I'm just going to offer a couple of comments, and we'll see where we take it. So just at the onset, this is obviously listed on the agenda for an action, being a second read. I know feedback was compiled. I'm not suggesting that we have a final document. As a matter of fact, I think there's some discussion still to be had. That said, the action could be to defer a formal adoption to a future meeting. So just wanted to get that out in front of everybody. But again, just for my, just a couple of comments. Again, reiterating, the intent here was to take the notes that we compiled as a group at our offsite training following the NISPAS session that occurred in January in an effort to distill some guidelines that would be, we thought would be helpful to not only new board members, to help them assimilate to the role, but also for existing board members if there was any confusion as we, I think admittedly stumbled through last year. One small example is what is the proper protocols of putting something on the agenda. So minor in nature, but I think it's good that we talked through what we agreed to and start to memorialize it. So Matt Stock volunteered to take those notes, put them into the framework. I think the notes came through the framework, but when you see it all together, obviously, other people had some additional thoughts, points of clarity, et cetera, which again, he collected and is reflected in the document as of Friday, any information he received as of Friday. So with that, what I would suggest, and Matt, I know you can share your screen, or at least that's my understanding, that we could walk through it section by section in small chunks. Hopefully, there's a number of the sections that we are all in agreement with the language or some minor wordsmithing perhaps. The protocol for amending something like this and getting a second and then doing a roll call vote to get a language updated is clearly cumbersome, but it's the right way to do it, and it's going to be difficult to try to do it over a video call. So what my hope would be, if we could go section by section and see where we have alignment and whittle down where we have to have some further discussions. And to the extent those items are maybe one or two in nature, we could potentially knock them off tonight. If not, it would be my suggestion that we vote to defer until we're in person and we're allowed to meet face to face in the July reorganization meeting. But with that, Matt, I'll turn it over to you and entertain any additional comments.
Thanks, Mike. So I sent a copy of the document to all the board members. This is actually part of the Office Suite that the district has. So it's a document that everybody should have access to. What I'm going to do is I'm going to share my screen, which I've got it, and I've got it up on the screen, and then we can kind of flow through. And let's see if this works. Okay. So let me know if you can see this.
Yep. See you.
I can see it.
All right. So what I attempted to do, because I, you know, everybody had different elements that they, that they sent, and thanks for all of the feedback, is I started. I was about a third of the way through James's edits before I realized I needed to turn tracking on. So unfortunately, I missed some of his. But the, I think most of the early ones were more phrasing than anything else. But what I went through is earlier today, it was tracking all the changes, but I accepted all of the minor syntax ones. So like, we decided to capitalize all the Bs for board. And so I went through, and instead of us looking at those 40 changes, I just approved those. But I left every substantive edit or comment in that we can, and we can go through the sections and kind of talk through them. And let's see how this goes. Okay, so any, before we get into the, into the sections, does anybody have any questions or comments on that so far, like the plan? Okay. All right, so the first section is really just an overview, and then the welcome. Does anybody, I didn't really get any significant edits in here. Clarence Central Schools being spelled out and a few other syntax things. But, and any concerns about these sections before we move into the more substantive areas?
Matt, I did provide some additional text that didn't get picked up talking about defining the philosophy of the district, setting goals and objectives, employing professional educators, to add that after the welcoming portion.
Okay, I saw that, and I apologize. I meant to go back and put that in as a block of text. So I apologize that I missed that one. I guess my question is, that section was, I wasn't sure if that's something that we wanted to have in the handbook or if it was, if it was something that was of a more like general nature. But I can certainly add that section in, and you guys can review it, you know, at a later meeting.
I thought, and I remember what Dawn wrote. I do think we need a section, and I forgot to add it. And I started looking through other board handbooks. On board member roles, I guess, what our responsibilities are as the board. And I looked through a few, a few other handbooks, a number of other municipalities, the school districts. And if you bear with me, I could read a few, and maybe we need this section upfront because if they, and I'm looking at, I think, Tonawand, it says board member roles. The board sees itself primarily as a policy-setting body and delegates the administrative schools to the superintendent. That's one. All right, in addition, the board provides oversight and represents the desires, expectations of the stakeholders. Two, the board annually sets goals of the district, taking into account administrative recommendations and the expectations of stakeholders. The district goals will become the basis of the goals of the superintendent and his or her administrative team. There's a few more, but I thought it would be important. Nowhere in there, I think, do we set out those responsibilities upfront. And I don't know if we want to narrow that down right in the beginning of what, where our scope is.
Okay, no, that's fair. So what I'll do is I put a very high-level description here, right? But if the, if the desire is to be more clear about board, the board role, what I can do is I'll take Dawn's text, and I'll put it in under this welcome section. And it can be reviewed later. And I think that's where some of the comments and discussion that you're talking about, James, could fit in if that's reasonable to everybody.
Yeah, I just think back to the education program we had at the retreat, and when he talked about our scope and, you know, how we act as a board and not individually. I think if you were a new board member, that might be something upfront that you want to read. So you kind of know you fit.
Okay. All right.
And also, just so you know, it's also on the website. So it's something that is already out there, so it wouldn't hurt to put it in here as well.
Okay. All right, so I will, I will insert the text that Dawn had in that section. Any other comments in this first section here?
No, not for me.
No, I agree.
Okay. So the next section was really focused on new board members and sort of the initial actions that go, that happen right after the election. So orientation, setup of district email, et cetera, et cetera. There were some suggestions to add in addition to. There were some suggestions to add, in addition to providing this handbook, a copy of the bylaws. There was also an addition suggesting that we include information on mandatory board training based on the state education law. I don't think those are controversial, but I didn't want to include them until we discussed it. The other piece is, again, I don't think particularly controversial, board president or vice president talking to the new individual about a variety of things, just orienting them in general, but also specifically on mentoring, which is a new element that we had talked about, kind of initiating more formally. Some text here that kind of talks about mentoring generally, and then the president would help identify, and again, some wordsmithing, but basically finding a mentor role. Dawn's comment, and then I think we'll kind of talk about this whole section. Dawn's comment was she wanted to propose that the mentor should be selected on a rotating basis. So I guess just as a start, does anybody have any concerns about adding the bylaws and the item seven here for state education law? Is there any controversy on that one? Any concerns about it?
No.
No.
Okay. All right. So let me see if we can do this properly here. Oh, that's not, that's not, okay. So any other orientation matters, including any concern about that text?
Just one comment in the, in addition, the current board president or vice president. It says may reach out, you know, I suggested will, you know, I think that is a requirement by whomever the sitting president or and/or vice president is at the time.
My goodness. Okay. All right. Any concerns about the orientation text then?
No.
All right. So I'm going to accept these. Obviously, everybody else can have fun editing this later. I'm just gonna try to get through the easy stuff. So any concerns about president and appropriate partnership? And then I think we probably need to talk about Dawn's proposal. Okay. So hearing no concerns there, I'm just going to accept that. Now, any thoughts about the mentoring on a rotating basis? Or do we want to defer that for later discussion? And a potential edit to that section for that reason?
I don't really have any opposition to stating something to that effect. I think every individual has characteristics that lend themselves to maybe mentoring differently, their styles. And depending on whom the new board members are, I think there's logical pairings that may exist. I don't, I would hope that one individual does not become a go-to over a period of years. But, you know, whether we want to spell out rotating or be something maybe less specific as far as, you know, using discretion to, you know, spread the responsibility or something of that nature. I don't know. Dawn, you offered the comment, I guess, what do you have to offer?
Um, Mike, I just didn't want to see it always being the same person. I think it would do us good to have it, different people in that position and different, so that it's not just the same person. And so we do stagger, just like you guys had recommended, possibly changing up some of the liaison positions. I just want to make sure we don't get comfortable in having one person do it.
I think there's some benefit to having the board president pick, but I also agree with Dawn that there should be some language about staggering it. So it's not the same person year after year, because sometimes, I agree with you, Mike, there are some people that are, will mesh well with different people. So maybe give the board president the responsibility, but put some language in there about, you know, not making it the same person every year, you know, spreading it out.
Yeah. I think too, there might be certain years that a board member has more time and availability to mentor versus something, you know, something else going on to have added responsibility.
Okay. So what I'm gonna do is the, I'm just gonna put a placeholder in and I'll wordsmith something along those lines. And, you know, like I said, you can kind of go from there. But I'll, if hearing no real opposition, what I'm gonna do is I'll just, I'll just put some language in that I think balances the points made and then you can review it later. If everybody's okay with that.
Yep.
Okay. So reorganization meeting, again, new board members, this is the fire hose. So basic structure of the meeting, it was suggested to add that the district, that clerk starts the meeting and facilitates the election of officers. I didn't see any other comments beyond that that I recall capturing. Anybody have any concerns about adding this district clerk element and accepting the rest?
No.
No concerns.
Looks good.
All right. So then we enumerate some of the board roles, president, vice president, community group liaisons. I'll get back to Dawn's comment in just a moment. NISBA roles and some additional text on the delegation role there. ECASB was an addition, and I don't have any language about it, but we could certainly add some. BOSI's role, and this is in the context of getting people awareness about what BOSI's actually is. Audit committee, other committees, and so on. So I'll get back to Dawn's comment in a moment, but does anybody have any concerns about adding the NISBA language and putting in some text about the Erie County Association? Just about what it is and some of the rules that we have on it?
I think it's a good idea.
I don't object.
Okay. All right. I'm just gonna accept those and I will put some text in there. So going back to Dawn's point, so I had intentionally left out, the concern was that she wanted, Dawn, you had said that we should enumerate the PTOs and CSEF. And I'm fine either way, but I actually intentionally left them out and described them in general terms as sports boosters, PTOs foundations, because I felt like our choice of liaisons could actually change over time. What, you know, we've added, you know, when CSEF came about, we added that. I didn't know if we really wanted to amend the handbook every time we changed that or not. I'm fine either way. I just wanted to, you know, raise that. How do folks want to go?
I don't think we need to have individual ones for each one of them. They're kind of like a subset of groups, right? That we can just kind of bundle up as one. That's kind of what we did, right?
Well, yeah, like I said, I just, I said several community groups that are affiliated with the district and gave some general examples. But again, I'm fine either way. Dawn, did you want to?
I just wanted, not to my knowledge, I don't believe that we actually have liaison for sports boosters. So I wanted clarification there, I guess.
Correct. We don't. That's why it's, there are lots of community groups that are affiliated with the district. We formally assign board liaisons to some of them. Like I said, I'm fine with whatever language you want, but that was the, that was the intent in the writing.
I would say, you know, being new last year, you get such an overwhelmingly, you get an overwhelmingly amount of paperwork and manuals that are like a foot deep. So in my opinion, we want, we just want this to be user friendly, as well as, you know, efficient and a good, like a handbook, a good go-to for them. But, you know, if I had my way, if we were gonna leave something in or out, and we were sort of on the fence and it was somewhere else, I don't want this to turn into a similar, like the same manual we get either.
I think.
Or you're saying they can take it out. I think just saying community organizations encompasses everything and I would leave it at that.
For what, you know, my perspective, I'm impartial to either approach. One thing I did suggest, whether it becomes a little bit redundant in this section, perhaps, the way it's chunked up between community group liaisons, NISBA, Erie County School Boards and so forth. But, you know, we did in our core portion of the agenda, talk about getting the list together of who is serving on what, which again, is on the website. So, you know, even whichever way we go, I think a reference to the website relative to the resources as far as roles and that we serve currently, I think would be good to have included.
What exact role committees are there on BOSI's? Because I don't know what you're referring to under the BOSI's roles, where it says we have various committees that our board members are a part of. What would be one example of that?
Yeah, sorry, that was ECASB. You were right on that.
Okay. I was just wondering if there's something I was missing.
No, no, just me being a flake. So we can get rid of that.
So Matt, you're basically taking that, that second sentence, various committees, and rolling that up under the ECASB?
Yeah, it's going to be, yeah, I'm gonna include it in ECASB. I think that there's potentially value in calling out BOSI's, but maybe it doesn't fit in the board role section, if that makes sense. Because I don't know if everybody coming into the, into the board role understands how BOSI's fits in. And so there might be value to talking about it, but I'm thinking that breaking this out into its own section or something might be helpful. I don't know.
Well, it's more that we use their services versus us being part, like us doing something with them, isn't it, for the most part?
Exactly, exactly. So it's, it's, it's a, the district is part of BOSI's and it gives us certain access to certain features and things. And that's the part that I think a new board member should be aware of. Yeah. So I'm gonna just make a note. Just in the interest of time.
Maybe under, maybe under budget, you could put the BOSI section.
Okay, that's a good idea. All right. So I'm gonna continue on. So I think that there, there's probably some additional discussion on the enumeration of the groups, but minimally, we want to have a link to the website with the current assignments. And I think that my recommendation, for what it's worth, is anything that's gonna be volatile year over year, references to it outside of this document is gonna make this document easier to keep up to date. But again, however you guys want to do it. Audit committee, Dawn, you had mentioned that you wanted a list of the number of meetings. I had said convenes about twice a year, I think. Is the point that you just want to be very explicit about how many meetings are required a year?
Well, so that someone knows if they will maybe, I would like to see on audit committee, is it meetings? Is it, are they virtual meetings? Is it 10 meetings? Because you just say about, so I was just thinking maybe we should just be clear. Sure, isn't there, isn't it a regulatory issue on how many meetings it has to be? Maybe break that.
Yeah. Rick, do you want to?
The only, the only regulation would stipulate two, because you need a pre and post audit one. Other than that, we typically have gone either two or three meetings.
So I could say minimally, and again, I don't want to dwell too much on wordsmithing, but what I, what I'll do is I'll just change this to minimally twice a year, because it can vary. And if you want to make other changes, I'll leave the comments in and other changes can be made. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Other committees. So this, the, and Dawn's comment on other committees is that, I said basically it's the practice, the board not to have any other standing committees, but they can be created ad hoc as needed or voted on by the board. Dawn mentioned that the district has various committees. I, I don't have a strong opinion on this, but I was focused on the committees and roles that board members have by the nature of being on the board and not committees that are, that board, that board members are invited to attend, but aren't necessarily formally on, if that makes any sense? Like the technology committee as an example, any number of us can participate in it, but it's not a board committee. It's a district committee that the board happens to participate in. So it might be semantics. I, I just, the point that I was trying to make here is that unlike some other boards and especially boards that have a larger number of people, we've historically avoided creating committees other than ad hoc committees. The only standing one that we have is audit. So Dawn, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to your comment.
So I think, Matt, I just wanted people to be aware that they have that option. And like, for example, you actually did sit on, as a board member, you actually did sit on technology. You were, that, other people, that was your, one of your roles that you took on. So, and I'm on the Family Support Center Advisory Board. So there are other opportunities for board members if they wanted to be on these committees. That's all I was saying. So we should, I just wanted to make them aware, because my first year on the board, I didn't know that these options were available. That's all I'm trying to, to just get some more information out there. And maybe that's a, that's something maybe the mentor can talk about.
Okay. Well, that's, and that's fine. Just to clarify, I was on the technology committee before I was a board member and then I discontinued on the board, on the technology committee soon after. So, you know, I looked at that as more of a community role. But in any event, I take your point. I'm gonna leave the comment on, and again, Mike, I think this is an area that having additional, additional section to talk about district committees or community committees or something along those lines to give the full breadth of things that exist might be helpful.
Thank you, Matt. I agree. I'm not sure where it goes, but clearly, creating the awareness for new board members around all opportunities to engage, I think are important.
Okay. All right. So let's keep cruising. So board meetings, I took, and this is one of the sections that I, that James had edited. And so I just took his edits and unfortunately, I didn't have tracking on. But the basic idea was I had the descriptions of the sections after the enumeration and he kind of merged them in, which I think probably made it clearer. So open meeting, executive session with some additional details on the purposes of executive session that are valid. And then educational information meetings. And to my knowledge, those are the three kinds of meetings that exist legally, and that's why I structured them that way. If I'm mistaken and we need to tweak this, we certainly can. I think that the comment that Dawn you had made was, what is the informational meeting? And this is, this, it is the retreat, the way that we've historically used the retreat. And so it may be that we have other purposes for that. This year, we started using it for talking about board process. And so that also was kind of a, in addition to the regular retreat meetings that we had. And I believe all of those fall into the educational informational meeting section. But any comments on these three pieces here?
I have a comment on the educational informational meeting. I thought if it wasn't labeled as a retreat, that anyone from the public could come. So labeling it as educational. So labeling it as educational informational meeting, I would say that it's possible that the public could come.
It, it's, it's interesting because you have educational information and we do the retreat, right? We also do the, we also do the forums.
Right.
And, and those are really, I mean, I guess we have a quorum there, so those are a public meeting, a specific public meeting. Um, maybe you want to call it board retreat. I was looking something up, I want to go back to my, which, you know, you could call it board retreat, right?
Board retreat is the only meeting that the public can't come to.
Right, and then, and then we could just do open meetings would include the forums, right? Because technically, we notice those like a regular meeting, right Jeff?
I, I would say the forums, um, would be if somebody challenged it open to the public. Because you've got the board there. Um, the, the reason the educational meetings, um, maybe informational is a suggestion would be taken out. I understand what Trisha said. If it's an educational meeting for the board, um, and that's why we call them trainings, education and training for the board, then those aren't subject to the open meetings law.
So why don't we call them educational slash training meeting? Right, which is why I think what's in the ma-, opening law.
Yeah, i- if, I'm, I'm good with aligning this with the law. I didn't, I didn't go into a lot of detail looking at it, so I think that that is good. Um, so what we can do is I'll, I'll tweak this a little bit to make sure that it uses that language. And then, um, I'll also uh, put forums up in the open meeting section there.
And then, do we, Jeff, do we, I, do we actually put notice out on the forums? Public notice? Have we done that?
It's in the calendar, right? I mean, uh, uh, upcoming meetings, I think.
I don't think, I don't think we widely publicize them.
Yeah.
Jeff, here on you.
If we don't widely publicize them, then how can we put them up there in open meetings?
I think it's just listed in the calendar of upcoming events, I think, but.
It's interesting, Rick, because I think, I think the forum would be an open meeting, right? And if someone wanted to come to it, we couldn't keep them out because we have a, a majority of the board shows up and it certainly doesn't fit educational and training meetings.
No, I, the forum would be open, you've got.
If you recall, we actually had visitors this year.
Yep.
We had students who came to the teacher forum, if you remember. And they, they were there for a class, but it would be just like any other community member.
So then we should start posting those, like with the 24 whatever hour notice that we're supposed to?
We could do that. We haven't done it up until now, but.
I think ultimately we probably have to.
Okay, so I will, uh.
But does that mean what's discussed in that forum and the meeting, the minutes that are taken? Are they public as well then?
Would make it all public.
Yes.
It's technically, technically I think it's public anyway. And I think if someone foiled them and we didn't turn them over, they would win. Cause it doesn't, it doesn't fit any of the categories to be exempted.
There's no action taken, so, um, the minutes would consist of, there was a discussion that took place like that. You know, the minutes are action items that take place typically and then broad category when it's not.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, moving on, the other point that Dawn had made, and I just put it in here, is uh, if you're going to miss a board meeting or forum, you should advise the entire board. Uh, Dawn, I don't know if you wanted to speak to that. I thought, I, I thought I captured it, but.
I think my only concern is just to make sure that we all know what we're doing to make sure we do have a quorum.
Well, e- either the entire board or the board president, right? So, I mean, I, I think we've been notifying Mike if we can't make it, is what we've been doing. Mike, someone can't come, notify you and Jeff, I mean, so I'm good with that. I'm good with.
That the whole board should know. So if you want, if someone says they can't come, then Mike's got to forward it out to everybody. Otherwise, I think someone should just send a board, an email to the whole board.
That's fair.
Finally.
Okay. All right, so I will accept that. Uh, forming the agenda, um, moving into this section. Um, agenda collected by the district and revo-, reviewed with the board president and vice president in advance of any meeting. Um, it's all driven by, uh, the process that we talked about during the last retreat. Um, a motion, if there's a, a late breaking item that needs to be, uh, um, if the agenda needs to be amended at the beginning of the meeting, we have a section for that. Um, it's usually appropriate to give the board and the superintendent advance notice about any topics that you want to add so that information can be gathered. Um, at, at the meeting, uh, it's, the items are added by a simple majority vote. Uh, it, you can also, uh, amend to remove or table, uh, for the same reason. So all of these things are just the mechanics of adding and, and modifying the agenda either before the meeting or at the beginning of the meeting during the approval, uh, uh, section. Any concerns or questions about the changes described or the process as a whole?
No.
No.
Okay. All right, uh.
Matt, excuse me, Matt, sorry, I didn't have my mic on. Um, should we put that there is the, the attendance requirement? Because I know that's in our bylaws.
Anyone?
Where are you proposing that from?
Just someplace in the, the meeting section.
So how could I do this?
My comment, I put a types of meeting, attendance requirements and attendance requirements. That's how I listed it in my, um, my red line to map.
All right, so I'm going to make a note on the side here. It sounds like there's potential interest in just having a whole section. I, I would say we probably want to take it out of types of meetings and, and maybe make it, make it its own thing, like what you're suggesting, Dawn, if that's the direction the board wants to go. Um, but since we're, we're kind of expanding on this point, I'll just make a note and then we can kind of follow up afterwards. So, uh, Robert's Rules, I think that this is just a very, very simple highlight of the basic Robert's Rules mechanisms that we use. It certainly doesn't try to go into a lot of detail. In fact, it says, just go read the book. Um, but it, it gives a, it gives a sense of what the purpose is and, uh, the, the basic mechanisms that we use. Any, any concerns or questions on that? Okay. So, public comment, uh, the, the point of this section is really to, uh, again, raise awareness of new school board members about how open meetings and open meetings laws, uh, work and how we've chosen to manage, uh, public comment. Um, and so the, the purpose, uh, really is, it, in the, in the language, because I know, Dawn, you had some concerns about the language that I chose, um, was really in re-, in response to that, that 90% of the time we don't have any issues. In fact, we get very few people in the board meetings, but those that do don't, don't cause any issues or concerns. Uh, but when we've got a, a difficult topic, it's, it's, it can be challenging because we've ran into problems where we haven't been able to manage the microphone. We've had people, uh, interject from the middle of the, the, uh, room in the middle of the meeting, uh, and, and wanting to talk. And so some of this is just to make sure that the board itself has an understanding of the norms and if we need to add additional, you know, definition around it, we can reference that, but.
I, I took your first sentence after Dawn's comment and rewrote it to read this. School board meetings are open meetings and public input is valuable and welcome, period. However, while they're open, if you want to lead off with something positive, right? School board meetings are open meetings and public input is valuable and welcome, period. Um, and then we could go, however, that doesn't mean it's a free for all.
What, I'm sorry, say that one more time in public.
And public input is valuable and welcome.
It sure does change the tone quite a bit, so I'm happy with that.
Okay.
And just to go back on attendance, I think we want to take it right out of the, our manual, which is three consecutive meetings without, what, what does it say? Without satisfactory cause.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Yeah, so it's, it's three consecutive meetings without satisfactory cause. It's not just three meetings. So it's right there in our policy manual. Is that what we call it?
I think it's the bylaw section of the policy manual.
Yeah, it's section, um, sec-, subject resignation dismissal. Bylaws.
And like the first 45 pages, I think are the bylaws.
Okay, all right, so I'll add that as a comment as well and, and.
No.
Okay, so I think if we've, if we're good with the, this first change, I will add that in. And I think that that resolves the, um, that concern. Uh, the la-, the last line here, uh, I, I don't recall who, um, raised it. It might have been Mike, but, um, clearly define a process and acceptable behavior, board has crafted a pamphlet for the community and then a link to the website to that document. Is, does anybody have any concerns about adding that?
Not on my end.
No, I think it's good to put in.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'll, and I'll leave this because again, it's just a website link bit. Uh, information gathering, uh, part of the responsibility, more board members may need additional information. How do you go about getting it? There's some, uh, language about, uh, that we had discussed about gathering it from the superintendent uh, and some of the practices that we have with regards to communication from the superintendent about different activities. Um, we can also request information, uh, about the district unless it's an urgent issue. Uh, and, uh, this was an amendment, uh, if I remember correctly, that Dawn wanted to add. Information will be provided to all board members in the next weekly update. More information, uh, is needed, superintendent can request more time. Uh, any concerns about this text or the, um, the addition, uh, of, of language here?
Do believe that's what we discussed at the, um, actual retreat.
Okay.
I'm good.
All right, so we'll just include that. School attorneys, uh, legal evaluation and the gist of it is, um, uh, use the superintendent or the board president as the liaison to the attorney. Um, and, uh, I don't recall, I think that this was, was James, I think, added this line just kind of reinforcing that point, I believe, about not directly contacting the school attorney without approval from the board. Uh, any concerns about the text in this section and/or the addition here? Okay. All right, uh, other school staff, uh, care, uh, representative of the board, leadership role, uh, being careful not to undermine the administration. Uh, specific concerns to follow the chain of command, raise them with their supervisor or principal as appropriate. Uh, as practice, uh, refrain from contacting district employees other than superintendent to connect, obtain information. Um, learning about a program or sport, et cetera, should request informations from the superintendent and those requests should go to the superintendent and copied to the entire board. Any concerns about this section?
I don't have any concerns. I just want clarification that we are allowed to, in fact, talk to, to, um, staff members and if we're in the building, or I just want to have clarification that we are permitted to speak with staff members.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, so I will accept those. Community, it's a similar variation on the theme for community members. Uh, direct the community member to follow the relevant chain of command. Um, and I gave a couple of examples, board members refrain from, uh, uh, allowing community members skip the chain of command and raise issues immediately with the board, uh, et cetera. So very similar in, in tone and intent as the school staff one. Any concerns or questions in this section?
I would just go back with Dawn said, certainly you can speak to any staff member, but if it, if it, just follow that, if someone says, uh, I have this, this issue and, and then you would direct them to follow the chain of command. But, but I have no problem with talking to a staff member.
All right. All right, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna take these as is. Now, Dawn, you had mentioned here, and I, I'm going to, uh, in the interest of time, I'm gonna probably say, let's get through this, the remainder of this kind of section and then, and then maybe it gets revisited because we've, we've worked on it for a while.
And so Matt, you mean that from the community section, that's what you want to go back to?
I'm sorry.
What are you referring to that you want to go back to?
Well, I, no, I'm sorry, uh, I, I, there's one more comment that you had made, uh, in the community section, so I wanted to cover that piece.
Okay, got it, okay.
And then I, yeah, and then I just want to, maybe we can get through the visiting schools section and maybe professional development and the presentation calendar, but save the budgeting process for another, another time, if, if, if that's okay with everybody. I mean, I'll go as long as you guys want, but.
I have no, I have no problem hammering through this at this point. I mean, we're, we're halfway, we're over halfway done with it, aren't we, Matt? I mean.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're six out of nine.
I think we've moved, even through the stuff we had discussions on, we've moved through it pretty well, so.
Okay, all right, well.
Wrapping up these comments and then just give me another draft.
All right.
Will you narrow this down?
All right, that's, that's fine. Um, okay, well, so Dawn, I, I wanted to give you the opportunity to speak because this is your, this was your, your comment. Um, you know, the, the, and, and maybe it calls back to the, the points that you and James had made earlier that framing the purpose of the board and the board's role early in the document is going to help kind of draw the line more clearly than, than the way I had, I had described it. But I don't know if you wanted to add any other comments to the point you made here.
I don't need to add it at this section. I can maybe address it in the, um, the section under policy, so we can just move on from this.
Okay, all right, fair enough. So visiting school, uh, we have a legal responsibility to meet in all of the teaching buildings at least once a year. Uh, we've incorporated that, individual board members can visit school buildings in their board capacity to learn about specific programs uh, by contacting the principal, court, uh, as a courtesy superintendent informed. Uh, public interactions, important not to blah, 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 uh, about undermining the administration. Um, there were a couple of points that I just wanted to call out. Um, the, Dawn had raised a concern, and I didn't make it a comment because I tried to res-, respond to it in text here. Um, but Dawn had raised a concern about essentially, how do you draw the line between? Um, like, you know, we can always go in and, and go to a, a sports event or one of those kinds of things and, and that doesn't require preapproval uh, or any of those kinds of things. And so I, I, I tried to draw that out in this, in this sentence here about board members when they're not in their board capacity and they're just doing the things that normal parents or community members would, that, that's, that's a normal thing. It doesn't require special arrangements, et cetera. Um, and I gave some examples to help clarify that. Um, the other point, and then we can discuss it. The other point was, uh, Dawn, uh, had mentioned that Jeff had said that letting him know i- is unnecessary. Uh, I, I had it in the notes, uh, that that was something we had agreed to, but I know that. I, I had it in the notes that that was something we had agreed to, but I know that, you know, he had said that. So I think those two points probably, you know, need to be clarified. The other point, as I was writing this up and including the edits, was clarification on contacting the principal and how we talked about going through the superintendent and for information. I think those probably need to be aligned better. There seems to be a dissonance there, so those are, I guess, the three points on visiting.
I, I think, I think, can I just, I'll, I don't mind the sentence you added. I think that, to me, clarified. You know, we're allowed to do everything else the community is allowed to do. You know, go to a sporting event, you ought to go to the theater. You know, I mean, pretty much we're allowed to do everything else anyone else is allowed to do. So I think that definitely clarified it. I think contacting the principal, that's just notifying them that you're going. Let's not up there talking about reaching out to them to do, like, go back to the group or get information. I think those two things are different. Maybe you want to clarify it, but that's letting them know you're going to be coming to the building is different than saying, hey, give me all the information you have on the fifth grade class and what the test scores are. That's something we probably want to go through Jeff on. And then my feeling about, I know Jeff said he doesn't want to know if you're going to the meetings. I mean, I know Jeff's our superintendent. I think, I think it's just good policy this superintendent knows you're going somewhere in case someone else calls him and asks about it. So I, I know he, Jeff said he doesn't care one way or the other. I just think it's good policy. What's the, what's the big, the harm? You're gonna send an email to the principal? You're gonna copy Jeff on it? Or you're gonna call the principal and send Jeff an email saying, you know, I'm going to Clarence Center Elementary on Tuesday? You know, to whatever. So that's my feeling about those three points.
Thanks. Any, any other thoughts?
I'll just make a point because it, it comes at like, let's see, the Sheridan Hill fourth grade play. It was on my calendar because, you know, we get all of these events ahead of time. And I didn't tell Jeff I was gonna go because I had no idea I could go with the time. When it popped up on my calendar, I happen to have the time to go, so I went over to Sheridan Hill to watch the fourth grade play, which was great because I'm one of the very few people, and then they canceled it. So sometimes it's going to be something that just happens. It's not planned. My schedule allows for it. And, I mean, I mean, I was happy that I went because the kids actually had an audience. And then that night they canceled everything in the school. So things like that, it's not all, it's not really that cut and dry sometimes. That, that was my point.
What about, like, for instance, if we're invited to it, obviously, call Jeff and say we're going even though we're invited? Since we were already invited as a board member, because there's a lot of those things that they send out invitations to or emails or whatever the principal does.
I mean, my, my, my two cents, my opinion is we're invited as a courtesy. But our participation in the majority of those things aren't any different than any other community member or parent participating in those functions. I mean, we can call it out. I, I, like I said, I, we can add more to this little section down, down below to spell it out. But I think the key is that in those functions, you are, I'm, I'm gonna say, an audience member in almost every context. And, and you're, you're not acting in a board capacity. And so I think that that's where the, the, the line is, is drawn.
So I, Matt, I guess I disagree because I wouldn't have gone to the fourth grade play for any other reason than being a board member.
But we were also invited.
But, but you're invited and also other people could go in that capacity, Dawn.
Yeah, that, that's my point.
I think that sentence says board members have all the same rights and access to, as community members do. So if parents are invited to that, we, we, we can do those things. It's when we decide we're gonna go to a building on our own because we want to go look at something and it's not, we're not invited. It's not something like the musical or a sporting event that anyone can go to. It's, it's, we're gonna show up there and say, you know, I want to, I want to look at this classroom or I want to see this. That, that's the difference.
And I agree, especially during, you know, during school hours. I, I think there's a difference. There's a line between going to see a school during the day, you know, as an administrator, as a former teacher. Having a board member come, it's, it is nice to know or like what, you know, what is the purpose of your, of your visit? Are you gonna, you know, do you want to talk to teachers? Do you want to talk to me? Do I have time in my schedule? Do I have a, do I have a drill plan that day? You know, what, what's the purpose for coming during the, the school day? Just so you don't create fertile breeding ground? You know, for complaints or things like that that would usurp my authority.
And if we're invited to the Sheridan Hill play or Clarence Center Flag Day, something like that. I, I think we're invited and Jeff is invited and that's, that's all we need to, we don't have to, you know, notify Jeff because he'd, he'd already be invited to that. But like, but like you say, if you make a special point of wanting to look at something, then that's a little different. And you should notify the principal and Jeff.
So to clarify, if you're going there, obviously seeking, using your board role and seeking out something. But if I'm going there to volunteer, I don't need to call Jeff and say I'm going there.
No, I, I don't.
I mean, that's my interpretation.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I'll, I made a little note that we can probably add some additional clarification on what, you know, how the invitations work. But I think overall, I think we're all in alignment on that one section. Any, I mean, there were a couple of other points. Any concerns about the the, the essentially notification of the superintendent piece? Are, are we okay just having it as a practice that we let the superintendent know?
I like the wording as a courtesy to be left in there.
Dawn, do you have any concerns about that still? If, if you do, then I'll just leave the comment and then you can pick it up later.
No, as long as if, if I decide that I'm gonna show up at something and did, I didn't advise Jeff, I'll just text him so he knows I'm there.
Yeah. All right. All right, so moving on to board professional development, this was the ECASB and BOSI's comment. I believe that that's also true. So we've got Gary County functions that are done. There's some NISBA conference components. And in addition, was suggested to add board members are welcome to participate in the district staff development day programs. Any comments, concerns about that section as it's been amended?
No.
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 Okay.
All right, thank you. And presentation calendar, this is again, just more of a, hey, we have a calendar of, of topics that we ask. And then we incorporate them in. So this is more, again, informational about practices that we have. Any concerns about that before I move on to the budgeting?
No.
Okay. So budgeting process, we talked about budgeted. I said that it typically starts at the board retreat because that's been our practice. Dawn's got some concerns about can that be discussed at the board retreat. My response to that was that the information that, that we typically have in the retreat is about the state budget climate, current finances and other kind of informational elements. But we can, we can come back to that as a, as a discussion item. And I, I continue through here just talking about the, the practice that we have of using budget updates on the agenda and about enrollment, state finance information in public as things are continued. And then, you know, the last phase of the budget development is to have the board adopt a formal levy amount. I didn't, this could probably be expanded, but I was getting tired at this point, so I, I put the bare bones in. Any, any thoughts on that section? I mean, Dawn, I, I think I captured your, your concern. But i- if you wanted to expand on it, you know, feel free.
No, I'm good, Matt.
Okay. So any other thoughts or comments?
I think it's fine, and I don't think you have to go into any more detail. I think everyone who gets on the board knows we gotta pass a budget. And we have a process. I mean, that's gonna be learned as we go.
Yeah. Okay. All right. And I'll move on to the policy section then. So policies, this is again, one of the other big things that the board does. So we build the policies. The administration builds the practices to execute policies. We can't contradict law. We align with law. We use the BOSI's policy service to help with most of the boilerplate. We go through a, a regular review of it, et cetera. For, so this is where, this is kind of the boilerplate of like, a lot of the policy is just kind of driven by law and that's just the way it is. But then there's another section, and this is, I think, probably the most interesting part is policies where it's the board that sets the direction. And I, I, I got some feedback, Tricia and Dawn, I, I, I didn't mean to literally use the volunteer hours and I, I was using it as an example about things that would be in bounds versus out of bounds for, for the policy document. Not to specifically talk about the, the volunteer hours and our requirements in this document. If, if, I mean, we can, we can adjust it to match the volunteer hours, but the intent was really to say that the, the policy talks about the number of hours and maybe the, the parameters for the hours. But the how we record the hours wouldn't be something that we would codify in the policy. It would be something that would be part of the documents that the administration builds on how it is implemented. So that was my intent. And then the other piece was to speak to, again, pointing to the policies on the website as opposed to trying to enumerate anything in detail here. So Dawn, I don't know if you, and, and Tricia, I think you made this, a similar comment. I don't know if you wanted to add to, to, to the, this, this section.
I don't necessarily agree with some of the stuff that's written.
Okay.
First of all, if we're gonna put in hours, I think we should probably put the right amount of hours. Because you'll have a new board member reading it and being like, if they don't have high schoolers, they wouldn't know. So they're gonna think, oh, they have to do forty hours, so that's where I would switch that. So that would be sixteen. And then I just don't agree with, I, I don't, I don't necessarily agree with the statement. I don't understand.
In what way, Tricia? I mean, and I'll just make a statement and then I would appreciate the feedback to better understand your perspective. But, you know, the way, and just taking the volunteer example out, I think the, the intent or the way I have always understood the policy creation is to set the direction and really outline the goal and the directives. So, you know, but, but allow for the district to really craft the implementation. We're policy, district is process. So I, I said I wouldn't go back to volunteer, but I'll use it very broadly. So if our objective is to get some level of hours and we want them, the students, to get a meaningful experience engaging in the community or something, or something broad, more broad, that allows for the district to craft, craft a program that they can effectively implement. That's the way I've always understood the policy objectives. Do you see it differently?
Well, I just think it's worded a little bit. Like, if it's our policy, then we should have some direction to how we want the program. I mean, not so much that we're telling them how to do, but we should, obviously, we have to agree to a number of hours. I mean, who's, I don't know if, if the school says that or does the board say that. I don't really know the details about how community service was really started or who started it or. A lot of times I know, and Brooks will say to someone, well, it's the Board of Ed's policy. They, they decide how it's run. And we even got an email saying the Board of Ed canceled community service. Well, I, we were never notified. We did cancel this, you know what I'm saying? Like, obviously, because schools close, they can't volunteer, but the, the thing that went out said the school board, you know, canceled community service. So as far as I know, I wasn't consulted on that. So that's what I'm saying. I'm like, who's? I, I get that, yes, I'm not gonna say this is how you run it. This is the form you need to use. I, I get all that. But the way it's worded is almost saying that like, okay, well, we could say there's community service. But technically, the community service, who runs the community service? Who started the program? Is it the board's program or is it the school's program? That's why, I, I don't know the answers. That's why I'm, I, I don't know where it all started. I wasn't.
So, so if, if the sticking point that you're concerned about is the fact that I'm using volunteers, volunteer hours as an example, I'll go through the policy document and I'll find a different policy to use as an example. But I.
I just think this is a bad example. Like, I don't, like, I don't know who is literally started community service. Was it a board that decided they wanted community service program and this is how they wanted it? Or was it, okay, we want community service. The school figured it out and it runs it. I don't know who, I don't know the answers to that. That's what I would love the answer to.
Things we're getting tied up in the example, because we have history in the example. And I guess what I, what Matt's saying, and he could change the example, is we're, we're not looking at the example as far as like what our history is. The example is a board can set the policy for community service, but the board doesn't write the specific documents. That we, we delegate that to the school officials. I guess, Matt, that's where you're going with it. And I think there's, there's some, we're getting tied up in the fact that we had an issue with community service. And that was ferreted out by you, Tricia, when you tried to get your son, he tried to get hours and we realized yep, the places weren't even open or existing. So I think we have to take, we're not looking at what happened. We're just trying to explain to a board member that in a general sense, if we're picking policy, like we want to have community service, we want to have this many hours. We could set, we could set that policy and then we would hand it off the administration to kind of, how does the program run? We wouldn't get involved in how the paperwork is filed, you know, unless, we eventually did because there was a problem and it raised to our level again. But if we were, if we were starting the program new, new, without all the history we have, we would just say, we want community service, we want this many hours, we want as a requirement for graduation. That would be our policy. And we would hand it off to Jeff and the administration to go make it happen.
Right, but given that, okay, so to your point, I totally agree with your point. But given the past history here, I feel like this is basically saying, okay, Tricia Andrews, you did. And, and I was not, I was not acting as a board member when I found this out. It wasn't like I was on this high and I needed the whole program changed. I literally started calling around to different places to get my son community service and none of these places existed or didn't for three to five years. Or some of them were unsafe. So, and then I went through the proper chain of command and I went to Jeff and I made him aware of the situation. And then we all talked about it later, how we could fix the program. But this, this example kind of is not a good example. I, I feel like if you take a different example, I have no problem. But this with the past history that's been given and I don't know who, that, that's, that's my opinion on this.
Okay, so, so Tricia, I, I, I take your point. I made a note, we'll find a different example. The, the one, I picked volunteer hours because it was something that any parent would, would know. But we can pick a different one. It's, it's not a major issue. I, like, like we were saying earlier, the, the point was to kind of draw the line between directive at a, at a high level of detail and, you know, and more directional stuff. And I, so I, I'll, I'll look for a different example and see what we can come up with.
And that's why I just, me reading this looks like I did something wrong when all I did was.
This, yeah, this, this, yeah, this is just an example of how we apply policy, so.
So can I weigh in now? Are we good? Can I, I have a couple of comments I want to make. I guess that, and this is, the example is fine with me, but I think that, to me, that falls under the category of evaluating the effectiveness of a program, which is part of what we are required to do and we're elected to do. So I'm confused, I get, I'm confused like why it's necessary to restrain right types of policy we make. And it is situational. So if there, if there is this issue and it did go through the chain command and, you know, nothing was done, then as board members, we do need to step in and say, listen, this, this effectiveness of this program or this service isn't working and something needs to be done. And that's where I don't believe, you know, I, I believe that we need to make sure that's clear. Because it, it seems like you're limiting what we can do and you're making it broad or specific. And it, it just, you can't just say, well, we can't do that because there is part of what we, we can do for that.
I don't think it precludes us from doing that. I mean, from a policy perspective, as long as, you know, again, we're giving the directive of what we like to see accomplished. Part of the policy might be the expectation that there's an annual report back on results or something. Part of the policy might be, uh, the expectation that there's an annual report back on results or something. Um, you know, I don't, I don't think the language precludes us from having, um, some, some guidance within the policy or beyond that, that allows us to hold the district accountable to deliver on results. I mean, at the end of the day, that's what we're doing.
Or, or to put it, put a different way, uh, uh, Dawn, I mean, the way I would look at it is if we don't feel like the, uh, the procedures that the district, uh, employ, you know, uh, uses to implement the policies, then we absolutely are able to give feedback and say, no, this isn't, this isn't the, the intent behind the policy.
It's not, it's not meeting our objectives.
Right.
Right. And I, I feel like it, it looks like we are restricted from doing that. And it's confusing that we don't have the authority to be able to do that. It gives new members, new board members, uh, uh, the impression that they don't have the authority to go in and talk about that, which is not the reality.
So, I, I don't know if others differ in, in thought, but I, I agree, Dawn. I'm not sure how it should be worded. I read the language and don't draw that conclusion, but I understand you do. So, um, Matt, you know, maybe if you're making a note there.
Yeah. Uh, so what I'm gonna do is, the, the way I'm gonna approach this, Dawn, is I think that where we're getting stuck is it's the difference between defining policies and defining successful outcomes of the policies. And so I think that maybe what we need to do is the, the text with the amendment of the example is about how to write policy and the level at we, which we generally try to write policy. And then maybe we need to have a section that talks about, um, evaluating the outcomes of policies or how po, uh, how that, you know, that feedback loop happens.
Perfect.
Okay, so I'll just make a note there. Um, and then a reference to the policy. So any, any additional comments on this section?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right, thank you. So I will take that. Okay, so non-meeting board communications. So this is about email primarily, uh, though it isn't exclusively on email. Um, it's really trying to be crisper about how we, uh, use email in the context of open meetings law, uh, using, uh, we use the Clarence email system for all board-related correspondence, uh, you know, freedom of information law. Um, the retention policies that exist, et cetera. We can't vote, we can't debate or have discussion via email. If it looks like a request for information or some other valid use of email is turning into a discussion, we wanna cut that short and add it to the next board meeting, um, so that we can talk about it, uh, you know, in the appropriate context. Um, it's common to use email to ask questions, schedule meetings, supply additional information, uh, those kinds of things. Um, and, and this last, uh, statement was really just the whole idea of it's probably good practice. If we ask a question in email and get a response, that we should, as a courtesy to the community, make sure that that question is asked and answered if it's relevant, um, in, in a general meeting. Um, there was also some amendments, uh, that were suggested about, um, uh, how to handle email requests, but also, and this is where I said, it's not quite just email, but there wasn't a better place to put it. Um, if there's a, uh, uh, an issue that a board member, uh, is made aware of, um, and there's a, a, a suspicion that it's going to be brought to other board members as well, we wanna make sure to make sure the entire board and the superintendent is aware of it. Um, and that we have agreed, again, this is one of the things we did in one of the recent retreats, is that um, the superintendent or the board president is going to be the one who responds to, uh, you know, inquiries to the board and will copy the board members in, in the response. Uh, so any, any questions or concerns on the way that this is written and the amendments that were made?
I, I would just, you know, the, the last section that was added, um, I think just some clarity, maybe we need to add. So we did agree that either, um, Jeff or myself would respond when we get email uh, correspondence. But I don't wanna, I leave the impression that board members shouldn't respond directly emails because every one of us will get emails one-off just to us individually. I think it's a good practice.
Okay.
Um, and again, I, I'm, I don't wanna maybe wordsmith it all at the moment. Um, but I think one, one of the items should be to confer with other members to, um, ensure that, uh, all of us did not receive the same individual email because that happens frequently. And I do think we should respond, uh, in those instances uh, with one response copying all of us, uh, on the response. But board members receive correspondence all the time. They should feel inclined to respond to communication. I think it's a good practice, though, to let the other board members know when, when, um, inquiries are being made.
I just, and I, and I changed the language here. I added it only because I was on the board, I remember, six months and Elizabeth Dunn sent me an email. And I didn't know if she sent the rest of it and I didn't know I shouldn't respond. Like, it's, it's, as a new board member, you get those emails, right? And they start, I don't know that the seven of us are all copied or not. Sometimes you can't tell. And then Elizabeth Dunn email is, hey, can we meet and talk about this? Right? So as a new board member, I might respond saying, sure, we can meet and talk about this. But it could be a, a negotiation issue that we shouldn't be meeting individually. So I just, I get nervous because we, as, I, I more saw this as more aligned, like, we all kind of know what we're doing now. But as a new board member, they got on the board and Josh could get hit with some emails and respond or start having a dialogue, right? And you wouldn't want that to happen. So I, I just, that's really where my mind was on this because it certainly happened to me in the first six months I was on the board. You know, we all get those emails. You don't know what's going on with them.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I, I'm gonna leave this section. I, I mean, if, if other folks wanna add their comments, uh, please, please do, but my inclination is to leave this section because I think that there's probably some more language adjustment that's needed. And I'm not gonna try to do that live.
I just wanna make a comment that I, I just wanna make sure that this does not preclude us from responding if we feel that we have a a really something very strong to say, or it's a, something that we feel we wanna weigh in on.
I, I. I, I don't, I don't want to limit. It's my opinion, we should not limit individuals' communications. However, I think, and it's touched on elsewhere in this document around how, um, you know, Dawn, you, you, you chose the words if you feel strongly on a topic. So, um, I think it just, we need to exercise due care, whether it's email or in, in face conversation. Um, and it's a little bit more cut and dry when you're on an email coming from the school address than it is a board email. You're acting on or speaking on behalf of the, of, um, your position as the board, that you don't uh, present it as anything more than your own, you know, your own perspective on a subject.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes.
Um, whenever I receive emails, and I've done this from day one, I, I never really, I, all I do is say, thank you for your email, Tricia Andrews, because I feel that like, I, I feel like they, I should let people know that I'm reading it because a lot of times you get comments like, well, no, maybe you ever respond. But I feel like if I just, I, and I literally just say, thank you for your email or thank you, thank you for your time for, you know, and, and your consideration into this. That's okay to say, right? Because I mean, I feel, I, I'm elected and I need to be able to make sure people realize that I'm actually trying to, uh, reading their email and responding.
I, I agree wholeheartedly. And I just, I'm not sure what the language is, just to, to make sure that we're not, um, stopping those exchanges, which I think are appropriate and valuable versus, um, again, you know, to James's point where you get the emails, which I think we've probably all gotten two or three of this year, where it goes to all of us independently. And we could all respond that way independently, sure, but I think we need to create a, um, uh, some awareness that that happens and, and, and develop a process to, uh, aggregate a response if warranted. Beyond.
But to be clear, as long as I'm speaking for myself, not the entire board, I can communicate if I choose to do so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna leave that section because it seems like there's more work that is needed on the language there. Um, open meetings law, I believe that this was just a, um, yeah, so there was some expansion on because they're public bodies, we have to have open to the meeting, except, 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 uh, executive sessions, et cetera. So I think that, you know, I don't think that there's anything controversial there. Uh, speaking to the press, uh, we have agreed that the superintendent's the spokesperson, uh, in most cases. And will address the press in circumstances where the board needs to speak directly. The board president is the default contact. And any individual board members who get press inquiries, uh, should refer to the superintendent or the president. Um, uh, and I'll just touch on this last section here as well. Uh, speaking to the community, um, you know, any comments, uh, about, uh, exceptionally difficult, about community staff, separate you as an individual, as a board member? Uh, comments have weight, uh, uh, of your role as a trustee. While you as an individual have no formal vested authority, the community might see you as a voice of the board. Care m- must be taken not to commit to policy changes, undermine the administration, promise to intervene. Uh, you can always ask questions and listen. And if you feel there's a general concern that rises to the level of board, you can raise it with the superintendent and the board as a whole. I think that some of this co, uh, this context is kind of what we're ref, we, we were talking about up in this, uh, use of email section. Um, so maybe there's an opportunity to kind of blend those a, a, a little bit. Um, but I, 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 I'm just gonna take all three of these sections. Any, any thoughts or, or, uh, concerns about the way that they're written at this point?
I didn't have any concerns, no.
Okay.
I know, and I just wondering, so when we had all of that communication coming to us about the vaccines um, and the emails from the parents, like, I didn't, I didn't answer them on an individual basis according to my beliefs. I was trying to talk with one voice from the board. So I'm confused.
See, and, and I think this is gonna come down to another comment because this is, this is where we are. We have a constitutional right, every one of us, under the First Amendment, to be able to say whatever we wanna say. And that includes writing letters to the editor, op-eds, anything else we wanna do. This board cannot restrict that. What we have to do is refrain, we cannot represent the board when we do it. All right, so you need to say, this is my opinion, not the board's opinion. That's the other concern about when we get these emails on our school board web email accounts and we start responding to them individually, we are not, we are not acting with a unified voice. And so if, if you get a vaccine email and, and, you know, I guess you could, someone could read off their email saying, I do not speak for the board, I speak for myself, which is we qualify under the law to protect us, then you could give your answer. Right? But I, I think we, we, we generally, and the board tries to run by consensus. So I, I think it's tricky to start responding to those emails, right, with your personal opinion when we're trying to run by consensus about how we're gonna deal with it. So I, I definitely think this is a problematic section for us because, you know, I, I never respond to Elizabeth Dunn, even if I agree with her or I don't agree with her. I assume we will deal with Elizabeth Dunn as a group. And whatever response she gets will become from the seven of us. I don't write her and say, I agree with you stipend issue, but I don't know what the rest of the board is gonna do with it. You know, I, I just wouldn't do that.
Right.
I, I think it, it's, it's troubling because especially when you use the, the, the line is when you represent the board. And when you send those opinions, your personal opinions on your school board email account, that's a little bit different than sending it from your private account and saying, I'm speaking as an individual. You know, you're responding to an email, you're responding to an email you received as a school board member and you're, you're responding as a school board member. Well, I, I just think it's a little bit problematic.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest, just given that you, I think you're right, this is an issue that probably needs more shaking out. Um, I will, um, I, I'm gonna leave this as is, but I think that this is one of those areas where we're probably gonna need to make more edits and commentary a little bit later.
Okay.
Agree.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so, uh, moving on, and this is the last page, I promise. Um, goals and evaluation, uh, board goals and self-evaluation, superintendent goals and evaluation, uh, little bit of language change here, and clarification about, uh, mid-year i- instead of six-month informal. Uh, and final evaluation at the end of the school year. Uh, that, any, any questions or concerns about goals and evaluation as, as it's written?
Is the superintendent mid-year, is that formal or informal or I, I, do we do in this year? I don't.
It should be formal and we do not.
And that's contractual, right? By his contract?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we missed this year. Okay, any other thoughts? All right, I'm going to take those. Take that. All right, um, addressing conflict, um, I didn't go into a lot of detail here, uh, but, you know, conflict's inevitable. We've got seven people with, you know, looking at trying to, uh, govern from very different places. Um, we need to be civil, we have to have, you know, follow some, some, uh, basic decorum. Uh, we use Robert's rules, uh, to help do that. Um, if we, uh, identify behaviors that seem to violate, violate the spirit of the handbook or code of conduct, we wanna address it. Uh, and I believe I captured the, the mechanism that we had decided in the retreat. Um, and then, uh, if it's unsuccessful or it involves, uh, public behavior that could reflect on the board as a whole and, and, you know, I gave some examples, some additional examples were added. Um, and then, uh, it can be raised to the board president or the board as a whole for discussion. Uh, and, uh, another amendment was, uh, if it is addressed with the board president, the board should be, should report back to the, uh, I guess complainant, uh, board member that action was taken. So, um, this is probably also going to be a meaty one, so in the interest of time, I'm gonna open it up, but I don't think we're gonna have consensus, so I, we'll just kind of give some feedback. And then if there's any obvious changes, I, I'm happy to make them. Otherwise, I will, uh, leave this unresolved in the document, so.
If I can, if I can, Matt, I think the attendance can come out because we're gonna have an attendance section, right? So that can come out. Um, I think, where was it? Board members and writing op-eds, that has to come out, that's illegal. All right, you can't restrict what any of us can say. It's, we all have a First Amendment right, so.
Wait, wait a second. I just have a question. You just said we can't restrict what you say, so that means this whole thing is basically void because we can say whatever we want.
No.
Have them both ways.
No, no, you misunderstand. I can say whatever I want as long as I don't speak for the board. So if I write an op-ed to the paper saying, I think educational policy as an individual should be the following, blah, 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 I don't speak for the board.
Key word, the key word is individual, individual. You could write individual articles. When three people team up to write an article, that should be crossing ethical lines.
It, but it doesn't, but it does. All right, three of us could decide to write something in our own personal opinion and it's fine. It's fine.
I, I beg to differ.
Well, you can beg to differ all you want, but we, but we have the constitutional right to do it. So.
Exactly why I have the constitutional right to say whatever I wanna say, when I wanna say it.
Feel free, you do.
Okay, thank you.
You just can't speak for the board when you do it.
Yeah.
So it, this has to come out of this document because you can't write that.
I don't, no, I don't, who's, is there law against it? I don't know, is there?
I will, I will take you to the, the NISM section and I will read it to you. Because it's, it says, as citizens of the United States, school board members have a right to free expression that is protected by the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, Article One, Section Eight of the Constitution of the State of New York. However, when making statements to stakeholders, the public or media, school board members have a duty to distinguish personal opinion from the establishment, the established policy or views of the board. All right, so as long as I'm not speaking for the board, we're speaking as policy for the board, I can have my own opinion about anything I want.
Okay.
So that's the law. So this has to come out.
All right, so any other, any other feedback on those two points? The missing more than three scheduled board meetings, we've got, we've, we're going to add an attendance element above.
I, I think the one thing, Matt, and this gets to the process as opposed to any particular examples perhaps in here. But we talked about, and you captured it, that if there is issues that arise between individual board members, it is, it is recommended, and, you know, it is best practiced to speak to, you know, the other party, one-on-one, to see if the issue could be resolved. It says if that is unsuccessful or the issue involves, okay, so I guess my, maybe a little bit wordsmithing, and I'm not sure how to, how to frame it, but the, the next step we agreed to is then it should be raised to the board president, who would convene a meeting with all three members in, in the example of a one-on-one, and, and then the board to try to mediate some resolution. It would not just be turned over to the board president to just deal with, independent of the other members, I guess, if you will. So I think, again, it's late, I don't, I don't know what the exact wordsmithing is, but if everybody can agree that procedurally that was the steps we agreed to, I think it's just a matter of working the words around the process there.
And, and I think when it gets to the last sentence, I would agree with that, Mike. It says, if addressed with the board president, the board president should report back to the board members that action was taken. The board president can't take an action against any board member. The board has to take an action against the board member. So, and the actions are, I guess, looking, when I was doing some research, is kicking someone off the board. Maybe we could censure them, I don't even know what that would involve. But the board, if, if we say to the board president, we have a problem that we can't work out, and he calls us all in and we sit down, he can't take any action against any one of us. Again, we act, we act as a board.
Correct.
Maybe action was the wrong word, maybe report back that, that the issue was addressed, or something like that. Because I know that, you know, we've been told that we can, you know, if, if we can't seem to work out something, we should go to Mike and, and he'll look into it. So I think it's more confirmation that he has looked into it, so that we know we're progressing, or hopefully progressing. At least that's, that's my understanding.
I mean, I think that's fine, that Mike can confirm that he addressed the issue with the relevant board members, right? I mean, that's, that's really what we're looking for.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think the way I'm interpreting that, especially with Mike's comments, is that we should probably just reword it. If the, the step, the next step where essentially, I'll call it mediation, just for the purposes of this. But if the, if the board president is mediating some issue, then everybody should, that's involved should be aware of it. But the, you know, I think cleaning up the process a little bit is going to make that last statement either not relevant or very, much clearer. So. Okay, well.
So that include, like, so if there's a problem and the president is mediating it, and then is that, and it's a board issue, then that's the final step and not, not the superintendent involvement?
I don't know how the superintendent can get involved in a board.
No.
I don't think we should be.
Yeah.
I, I don't think, as a board, you can't go to the superintendent to intervene in board matters. Technically, the only employee, technically, the only employee is the superintendent, right? So technically, he works for the seven of us. So if there's an issue between the seven of us, that doesn't involve the superintendent, and no board member should be involving him in it. It's between the seven of us, and two of us or three of us or how many of us are involved. So Mary Beth, right, Jeff should even be brought into it.
Yeah.
True.
Yeah.
So, well, we do, we do, though, ask Jeff for guidance, and Jeff has, has, on multiple occasions, said that, you know, it's very difficult for the community to distinguish us between a board member and a community member. And we, we should be well aware of that, and especially acting in, in a group, that it would give the impression of a board, a board position, when in fact it isn't. I mean, for my last three years on the board, I know that Jeff said it all the time, you can't distinguish, you can't distinguish. So you should be very careful on, on what you do and how you do things. So I, I guess that he has weighed in on that topic.
But I guess what I'm saying is, if we have an issue between board members, Jeff is not the arbitrator, which is where we're at at this point.
Right.
About how we arbitrate issues. And if there's an issue between board members, if you're upset with the behavior of a board member, if you don't like what I have done, going to Jeff is not the appropriate way to deal with it. Going to Mike, or, or someone else, you know, directly to the person you have a problem with, deal with it.
Yeah.
Jeff is, for the most part, involved in the discussions because he's in these meetings with us.
Right.
Just to be clear.
Well, yes, I, I don't think anybody is, is disagreeing with that point, though. And I think that the issue is, to put it in, in different terms, if you're in a company and there's a bunch of vice presidents that are arguing about something, you know, they're, they're not pulling in managers and saying, what should I do? And that, and that's, I think, the, the overall concept that, you know, we've got to resolve this, and we can't, we can't go to the superintendent, even though the superintendent, as you say, has a longer time horizon from most of us. And so they, you know, the superintendent can give, you know, this is what the board's done in the past, or this is what best practice is on school boards. I, I agree with you there, but we can't, in the, in the specific cases, allow the superintendent to mediate. That, that's, I think, the distinction.
Yep.
And I agree with that.
Yeah.
Totally agree with that. I guess I wanted to make the point that, that he is involved, and he does participate in these discussions because he, he is in these meetings, and he has weighed in. So it's a little disingenuous to say he, he's not involved because he is.
I, I didn't, I don't think anybody said he wasn't involved. We're saying that he is not able to arbitrate the decision or the issues between board members. Very, very narrowly, yeah. Okay, so it is late, we've gone through the document. I think we actually made a surprising amount of progress, even though, you know, I know it's a, it was a bit of a slog. So I appreciate all the feedback that you, you gave. I will take maybe one more pass at cleaning up some of the things that we talked about today. And then I'm going to hand it over to Mike to, you know, do whatever it is you guys want to do with it next.
Matt, one last thing, I had made the suggestion that we, we actually sign it.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I apologize, Dennis, I also didn't include that. I, I, again, it was one of those things where I wasn't sure if it was something that we wanted to include or not. My thinking in, in, as I was developing the document, was something that would be relatively static and, and not something that would necessarily be signed every year. But I, I, I'm, I'm fine with whatever the board obviously wants to do. So that, that's another item for, for discussion. I mean, do we want to have some sort of a, a formal kind of, I've read and agreed to these terms and conditions like we have with the code of conduct?
I think, I guess, Mike, I have a question, is this a reference book? Or is this, what exactly, I, it was my understanding that we are putting this handbook together as a reference book for current and new board members. So, so what exactly is the action? Like, what are we voting on? Because it's not a policy. We didn't vote on the actual brochure that we did that, I wasn't on the board then, but for the meetings.
Yeah, Dawn, to, to answer your question, so, again, this is my opinion, having drafted it, this is my opinion. I don't think that this is something that necessarily needs a board vote. I, if, if the board wants to vote on it, that's, you know, I mean, that's a decision the board can make. But I agree, I think that this is just a, a practice that we want to adopt as a board. The second point is, I, I look at it as a handbook, so it is a guide and a reference text that is used to help with continuity between years and different boards. And, and I, that's the way I've, I've been thinking about it as I've, as I've written it. But again, the board can, as a group, can do whatever they want with this product. I, I just took a stab at the initial draft.
I thought that's what it was as well, that was my impression through the whole process.
I, I, that's why I sent Mike an email saying, I'm not sure what the, I, I wasn't understanding what the action was. If it was just like rewrite, like, you know, make improvements on, you know, the writing of it, or if we're actually voting on, I didn't understand why we would be voting on it, it was just a handbook.
I, I, I think, I mean, I'm going to voice my thing, I, I think it's a little more than a handbook because it kind of sets our policy of how we're going to be, we're going to behave together. And I actually think it needs a vote, because to adopt it, we need to vote on it. It's actually worth how we're going to deal with emails, and how we're going to deal with each other, and what happens when there's a conflict. I mean, this is, this is, we can call it a handbook, you can call it a handbook, but it's technically a policy document. We just set forth.
They already have policies and conduct for this stuff?
What was that?
We do, we.
A code of conduct and policies that we sign, or, yeah, code of conduct, I mean.
Yeah. I mean, this is still a policy, we're still, we're dictating how we're going to deal with a lot of this stuff going forward. So I think, how do you adopt a manual without a vote?
So, you know, my, my perspective, and maybe formally, it doesn't rise to a vote. I think it would just be good practice for us to acknowledge that we've talked about it, debated it publicly, and we've arrived in a final product. And one suggestion that I had made, and again, I haven't gone back to revisit our code of conduct directly, but perhaps if we get to the point of aligning on a handbook that kind of spells out the protocols which we're agreeing, we're going to, how we're going to conduct ourselves and operate under, that perhaps the code of conduct just references our commitment to adhere to what the handbook states. But again, I'm, I'm open to discuss that at, you know, future date. So, is that, is that enough discussion for tonight on this item?
It is for me.
Yep.
So I guess, and it's on for action, I would entertain, I think we need a motion to defer and table until the next board meeting.
I'll make the motion to defer and table until the next board meeting.
Thank you, Dawn.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Mary Beth?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Yep.
Next item, we have in our packet, committee of the whole items of information with the scheduled meetings. Again, as previously discussed, our next regularly scheduled meeting is slated for July 13th, which is the reorganization meeting, tentatively to be held in person in the Clarence High School Lecture Hall, pending governor's mandates and guidance at 7:00 PM, which we will clarify as we get closer. Before I, I entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session, I just wanted to take a moment and acknowledge our departing, departing board member, Matt Stock. Again, just wrote up a few words, so bear with me as, as I try to read them out. I first met Matt back at the Area One BOSI's Perspective Board Candidate Session back in March of 2012. While our conversation may have been brief at the day, it was clear to me that Matt would be a great board member if he ever decided to run that year or any year thereafter. He was inquisitive and even keeled. He was there to understand what board service involved, and there to understand how he could make Clarence better. Simply stated, he had no agenda but other than to serve the community. So while I chose to run in 2012, and Matt decided to wait another year to pursue his seat on the board the following spring, I always looked for him to show up on that, that ballot box. For those that might recall, the spring of 2013 was filled with some tension in our community, the tension that threatened to divide us. Matt put the school district above himself, and he chose to withdraw his petition for the board seat that year in the interest of coalescing support around two candidates, one of which is on this board today. As we recall, the budget was defeated and this community needed to move forward. In the months that followed, in advance of a critical revote, Matt was part of a group of concerned citizens that reached out to those that had advocated for the initial no vote in an effort to build a bridge and find a path forward. Found an image, you can find anything on Google these days, Matt, of Matt standing in front of a sign on a, on a hotel that is no longer there across from the high school with a big bridge, where there was a press conference held in June of 2013. Matt and the others came together to publicly advocate for a yes vote on the revised budget. It passed, and we as a district began to move forward. The following year, in 2014, Matt was elected to his first term on the Board of Education. Over the last six years, Matt has served as a trustee and, most recently, as board vice president. He also carries the unofficial title of Board Tech Guru, which I think he lived up to tonight. He's been involved in two successful capital projects. He's oversaw an acceleration of investment in technology. And most importantly, has helped rebuild the district from those dark days of 2013 to the point where we're on a more stable footing today. In short, he is leaving the district better than when he arrived. In closing, I'd like to thank Matt for his service to the school district and the community. He has always been a calming voice and provided a steady presence. He has served, demonstrated the same selfless qualities that make his days leading up to his election six years ago. Matt, thank you for your tireless service, it has been an honor to serve with you, and I wish you well, my friend. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I just, I, I wanted to say that I've, I've really enjoyed my time on the board with everybody. It's, it's been a pleasure the past six years, not all of it's been easy, that's for sure. But it's, we've, we've accomplished a lot, and I'm, I'm really proud of the work that we've been able to do. So for those of you who are continuing, you know, good luck. And, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing how, how everything progresses. And I am, I'll be around if you need me, so.
Thanks so much, Matt.
Thank you, man.
Thank you, man. We'll probably put you on the next task force.
Maybe I should get back on the technology task force.
There you go.
So would you like to do the honors of, oh, making a motion to adjourn to executive session?
All right, let me see if I can do this properly. So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of discussing employment history of a particular person.
I'll second that.
All right.
All right, all, all those in favor, let's dispense with the individual, I'll say aye.
Aye.
All right, our meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.